Thanks. Welcome everyone to the planning town of Waterford Planning and zoning commission meeting of November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three. This is a web based meeting, so we are operating under the following procedures. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. The video recording will be available within twenty four hours. And will be posted on the town of Waterford's planning department website. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute unless they are speaking. If an attendee creates an audio or video disruption, the Zoom moderator may place them on mute. Or remove them from the meeting if the disruption continues. We will not use the chat feature in this meeting. We appreciate your attendance. Should you have any questions about the process, you may call our staff at eight six zero four 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 five eight one three. Between the hours of eight AM and four PM, Monday through Friday. And with that, I turn the meeting over to the chair.
Great, thank you, Mark. Welcome everyone to the November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. First thing is called to order appointment of alternates. I see me, Tim, Condorino, Karen Barnett.
And Doris is here.
Doris is here.
Doris is here. Is that it? So Tim is not here. Vic is not here. Okay, Doris, so you'll be appointed as a member for the meeting this evening. Okay? Doris, you there? Is Doris there?
I just mess. Just asked her to unmute.
Okay, we have a quorum without her if she is there.
I'm here. I just had connection issues.
That's okay. Great. All right. So you're a member of the commission tonight?
I'm here.
It'll be four members. All right. First, the second item is approval of the November fourteen, twenty twenty three minutes. Do you have a? Motion and second on that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is her second?
This is Karen. I'll second.
Motion made by Tim Condorino, seconded by Karen. Any additions or deletions, corrections, edits on the minutes? If not, call for a vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And Karen's all for. Okay, so four to nothing. Item number three, application receipt. Do we have anything?
We do not.
Okay, makes it easy. Item number four, application review. PL dash twenty three dash twelve request of David and Cynthia. Yeah, I'm sorry if I butcher this name. Yanaros applicant and owner for coastal site plan review and approval for a new single family home and property located at two two four. Nyanic River Road, R forty zone in accordance with sections five point one point one. And twenty five point four of the zoning regulations and as shown on plans entitled zoning location survey. Property of Cynthia Yanaros and David E. Yanaros for property located at two two four Nyanic River Road. Town of Waterford, County of New London, Connecticut, actually acquired by one eighteen twenty four. Can somebody tell me if that was a correct pronunciation of that name?
This is the applicant's agent, Jim Bernardo, and yes, it's David and Cynthia Yanaros. Yep. You know, he did a pretty good job with it.
Yeah, okay, good. Thanks. Thanks. All right. Are you taking over the application for the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so four is yours.
Hi, okay. Hi, like everyone can hear me. Okay, then I assume?
Yes.
I'm getting some nods. So, okay. All right. Yeah. So my name is Jim Bernardo, a surveyor here in Connecticut. And I'm here tonight representing the property owners David and David and Cynthia Yanaros at two twenty four Nyanic River Road. This property is in an R forty zone and is thirty one thousand three hundred and seventy two square feet. It's a preexisting nonconforming lot in the zone. It's served by both municipal water and sewer. The applicant is proposing to construct a single family residence on the property. There currently is a single family dwelling there, built sometime in the eighteen hundreds. The the owners are trying to evaluate whether it's cost effective to move the existing building and add on to it or demolish it completely. And construct a totally new home. Either way, it would be in full compliance with the zoning setback requirements, whether they move the house. Or whether they build entirely new. The typically a single family residence would would be exempt from your coastal site plan regulations, however. The structure is within one hundred feet of the coastal resources and we have site some site development or some excavation within fifty feet of the coastal resources, which I'll. I'll go through when we take a look at the plan. The property is located on the west side of Nyanic River Road and it's bounded by the Nyanic River or the Keeney Cove section of the Nyanic River. It's also located within a special flood hazard area. With a zone AE with a base flood elevation of twelve, which I will also point out to you as we as we go over the plan. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
Hang on, I will do that. All right. Are you able to share screen now?
Yes, I am. Let's see. Yeah, let's pull up here. Okay, so you should be seeing the. The zoning location survey or zoning location plan that has been submitted with the application. What I've done here and I'm like I say, I'm hoping you can see it. So so here's here's Nyanic River Road. The existing house is is positioned in here. It's this. There's a lot of lines, but this this dotted line would indicate where the current. Houses. And so what we basically did was we took this corner right here of the house and we swung, we. Basically pivoted on that corner and swung the house in so that it would meet the zoning setbacks. So you can kind of see this outline of this of this structure here. Swings into swings into place over here. And then there would be a additional put on the eastly side of the house and then a then a two car garage. It currently does not have a garage. This line here, this gray line, this is the special flood hazard area. This is zone AE elevation twelve. As you can see, the the house is considerably outside the flood zone. The flood elevation again is twelve. We're looking at around an elevation of twenty five for the floor for the first floor of the house and the garage. So the red line is the coastal resource, which is in this case, the coastal bluff or or escarpments. And the adjacent red line next to that would be the fifty feet measured from the coastal resources. So what we have. We have this corner of the deck, which is about fifty five feet from the coastal resource. And then we also have this grading. What the owner would like to do is construct a full foundation under the new house. And do a walkout on the side facing the river with an elevated deck. So there's some grading that needs to take place. A little bit of grading over in this area here, which encroaches within the fifty foot from the coastal resource. So therefore. With the setback for the deck and the grading, it does kick in the cam requirements for the for the project. There will be a footing drain which will discharge off here to the side of the property in order to. Put a, you know, a perforated footing drain around around the perimeter of the foundation. We've shown silt fence along the limits of the activity. Which is basically covering from the north property, from the north side of the property, all the way down to the south side. That's what this line is with the little squares. That's. That's sedimentation fence. We did send a request into the DEP for what they call an NDDB or the National Diversity Database Request. And that's included as part of your application package. And I'll just read the first paragraph. It basically says that they they do not anticipate any impacts to. Any negative impacts to populations of federal or state or endangered, threatened or special special concern species. Due to the development, including the stormwater discharge associated with the construction. And that entire report is as part of your application package if you would like to look at it. So some of the things that need to be concerned again. What we have for coastal resources on this site is basically just general coastal resources. The the bluffs and escarpments and then as I said before, the coastal flood hazard area. So one of the concerns would be the degradation of water quality in the Nyanic River. And again, we've limited the activity as much as possible and we've diminished, we've included some. Some sedimentation fence and other stormwater best manager practices such as limiting amount of disturbances. In in that upland area as well as some site stabilization requirements. The coastal area management regulations do permit a reasonable use of the coastal properties that are consistent with the coastal resources. As long as adverse impacts are mitigated to the extent possible. With the activity, we're not we're not anticipating any impact to the coastal resources. The again, all disturbed areas are going to be stabilized and seeded upon completion of the construction. We don't anticipate, there's no, it's privately owned property, so there is no impact as far as water access. There's also the Keeney Beach area that the town of Waterford owns. Right down to the to the south of this property, which provides access to the cove and. Obviously, DEP always pushes for water dependent uses. Unfortunately, this is an R forty zone, which is a residential zone. And there are very few permitted. Coastal coastal commercial uses that are allowed in the R forty zone due to the fact that it is a residential zone. It's limited as far as what water dependent uses can be used there. So that's basically the nuts and bolts of this project. Again, there's it's an existing. Developed house, house lot. They're going to rotate the house or rebuild it so that it complies with the zoning setbacks for the zone. And we have just a little little bit of activity here as far as grading. And then again, the elevated deck, which is closer than fifty feet, closer than a hundred feet to the escarpments, which. Kicks in your your cam review requirements. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know I went pretty quick, but if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to go through one.
Okay, let me see if anybody has any questions, Jim. But if you could stop sharing the screen for a second so I can see.
Sure, I will stop sharing.
I have to bring that back up for people. Anybody have any questions?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
What is the current square footage of the existing structure that's there?
I don't, offhand, I don't know if I can pull. Let me just look at that real quick. The new house I have labeled as twenty two hundred square feet. And it doesn't look quite like we're doubling the square footage. So. I'd be get around fifteen to eighteen hundred square feet is the existing house. And the new house is twenty two hundred, which I believe doesn't. Actually, Tim, I can't say for sure. I'm not sure if my twenty two hundred square feet includes the garage or not. I probably probably would. So. That would mean the existing house is probably about eleven hundred square feet, about half the size of what's 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 being proposed.
So is there any other questions? Karen or Doris?
I have one question. This is Karen. You mentioned that there's no garage, but I see another structure on the property. What is that?
Well, that's a detached. It's it's more of a barn than a garage. They don't use it for parking of any kind of motor vehicles. It's used for storage, mostly for boats and and things of that nature. So it's not used for parking of vehicles.
In terms of. Building percentage on the property that would count that, correct?
Correct.
Do you know the square footage of that building?
According to my calculations, if you look, there is a zoning compliance chart. And the maximum coverage for the lot would be twenty percent and and they will only be they will be at twelve percent.
Okay, I just want to confirm that that building was part of your twelve percent.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Doris, do you have any questions?
At this moment.
Okay, Jim, I have a question. You we mentioned the the nonconformity of the setbacks.
Yes.
What about the nonconformity of the lot size?
Yeah, well, I mean, there's nothing we can do about that. That it's a preexisting lot, so it's it's been around. I actually had surveyed this property about forty years ago and I don't remember all the history on it. It's it actually, if I can pull up my. If I can share my screen one more time. Which one is it? It's this one? I'm sorry. Oh, stop sharing. I actually shared my screen for the very first time today in a Zoom meeting, so I'm kind of. I found it kind of interesting. Let me see if I can find that. Oh, this one. Here we go. At one point. And in the old deeds for this property, there was supposed to be a road that ran along the top of this embankment and the deed for this property. And again, I don't remember the the original title, but referred to a road that was supposed to run right along the cove here. Probably in the in the mid eighteen hundreds. But with regards to your question as far as the lot area, it's a preexisting lot. It's nonconforming. There's not anything that we can do about it. But we are going to try, you know, by by relocating the house that's there or building a new one. It will be in full compliance with all the setback requirements for the zone. But there's nothing we can do about the area.
Okay, so can you lower the screen again?
Yep.
Mark, do we? Do we allow a nonconforming lot for size to increase the size of the property on that? Do we do that on a regular basis?
Yes, there are. There are several nonconforming lots in town. And and because the size of a lot may be nonconforming. In terms of area for the zone district, you still are permitted to develop on that lot. And provided you meet all the other provisions of the zoning regulations. Setback coverage and everything else. So. Because the lot exists in its state and they can't increase the size of the lot. The zoning regulations allow you to develop the lot with a single family house, provided all other. Other provisions of the regulations are complied with.
Okay, and so Bert, for Tim and Doris and Karen, Bert had put together a question. Basically was what I asked just now for the most part, right? Is that and and so his concern is alleviated? So the the question becomes, I guess, do or? Can we require that the setbacks get met now?
Can we require the setbacks or what? I'm sorry.
Can we require that the new house meet the new setbacks rather than just amending what's there? And can we require that the the new house meet the setbacks?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Rather than rather than rebuilding what's there and 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 not?
That's correct.
Okay, so I guess that's what the commission has to decide. If.
Yeah, and yeah, and and that is actually what the applicant is proposing to do.
Right, maybe I didn't make that clear. There there are not planning on keeping the setbacks where they are. And one of the reasons we're going through this effort is to bring it in compliance with the zoning setback requirement. So. You know, unless they decide to keep the house just the way it sits right now, which is not what they want to do. They they do intend on meeting all the zoning setback requirements for the zone.
Okay, great. Any other questions? If not.
So when you said that we were at twelve percent of the coverage, was that twelve percent of forty or is that twelve percent of the actual?
No, that's twelve percent of actual. It's based, yeah, it's the square footage of the buildings. Divided by the the square footage of the lot, the current square footage of the lot.
Okay, I don't have my calculator, so I I wanted to make sure that we weren't just talking apples to apples. Any R forty? This is specific to this lot.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I have an additional question if possible, too.
Of course.
This is probably for Mark or Jonathan, but in in reference to twenty four dash two dash one. Is this in compliance with that portion of our our regs?
I want to grab my zoning book as well.
Twenty four point two point one. Is that is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, twenty four point two point one. It more specifically, it says, no nonconforming use of an existing structure shall be extended to occupy land outside such structure or space in another structure. And I'm referring just to the footprint increase.
Right, right. Well, twenty four point, actually, all of twenty four point two refers to nonconforming uses. So this is a single family use in a single family district, so the use is not nonconforming. So that would not, this particular application, this section of the regulations wouldn't apply to it. This would be if you had a nonconforming use. Let's say a commercial use in a residential district. Something like that would fall under these restrictions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you have anything to put in in on the record, Mark?
What I have is, what I had provided the commission was my staff report, which was the written findings. But also there was that memo that we had alluded to earlier regarding Commissioner Shannard's questions. Essentially, this is a pretty straightforward, single family CAM application. There were. There were four conditions that I had initially put on to these findings. And I I just want to get those on the record quickly, that the. That the erosion control measures during the construction shall be installed and remain on the site for the duration of the project. And until the establishment of vegetative cover occurs on the disturbed areas. The plan is going to be revised to include some stone armoring at the roof gutter. Footing drain discharge. So what that would be, Jim, would be some sort of a splash pad, something small to protect the slope. So that and. That modification to be shown on the final plans prior to filing on the land records. Yeah, no work covered by this permit, including the stockpiling of any materials, shall be constructed outside of the proposed silt fence. So the proposed silt fence is your limit of work. And it has built surveys shall be submitted and approved by the zoning official. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance. That's at the end of the project. That's in order to verify that all the improvements have been constructed in accordance with the approved site plan. What I would also, if the commission so desires, in my memo to. To you yesterday regarding Commissioner Shannard's comments is that if. If the commission desires, they can add a condition to the proposed motion. That would require that the location of the single family dwelling be in conformance with the zoning regulations. It's kind of a belt and suspenders thing. Reason for that is that a site plan in order to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to be. In conformance with the zoning regulations. So putting that condition in kind of solidifies that conformance. So so the commission can add that as a condition number five and have that written to the motion.
Agreed. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Bernardo? Okay, if not, can we get a motion? Anybody to make a motion? All right, I'll make a motion. I move that the commission approve item number four, which is PL dash twenty three dash twelve, the request of David and Cynthia Yanaros. For a coastal site plan approval for a new single family home on property located at two twenty four Nyanic River Road. Per the plans submitted by Bernardo. And. With the conditions one through five. One through four being in Mark's staff report and number five being that all the. Construction be in conformance with the zoning regulations.
Right, there is just there's a scribbery there on the. In the. On the app, on the, you you said PL dash twenty three dash twelve?
Right? Isn't that what it's on there?
Okay, so so we just have, I'm looking at the motion in the, so you read the right one. I'm sorry. I was looking at the motion. There's a there's a typo in the motion. It's the. There's a, it's just PL dash twenty three dash fifteen. So we can just disregard. You you read the right motion. I was just checking. Sorry.
The got one and the motion has another.
Right. So there's a motion. Motion been made. Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay, seconded by Tim. Any discussion on the the motion? If not, call for a vote. All in favor? Aye? Aye, Doris, Tim, Karen. So four to nothing approve this application. Good luck with the building of the the home.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Jim. Okay, moving on to the next. Item is item number five. It's a preapplication review. Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section seven dash fifteen, one five nine B and Section twenty two A point five of the Waterford Zoning Regulations. Of a potential application for a site plan, a special permit to locate a hotel at sixteen and eighteen Boston Post Road and two ninety five. And three thirteen Willets Avenue Extension. This was a product of. A previous meeting where. We were told that a hotel was being proposed for the old Mondays or McNamara's site. Between Willets and Route one. And we thought maybe, I thought maybe it was a good idea that they come in because it's a special permit. Get the flavor of the commission, make sure that all concerns are addressed. Before things get too far down the road and then they're heading in the wrong direction. So. The applicant was gracious enough to come in with this with the representatives. I I see Bartlett, I see attorney Sweeney. I don't know who else is here for the applicant. But if they can give us a quick presentation as to what it is, get some comments from the commission. So that the project can hopefully move forward smoothly. So. Here we are. Who's going to take control of this?
I'll do that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the time tonight. Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a partner and a land use attorney with the law firm of Tobin Carver in New London. And as always, I appreciate the opportunity to appear before your board. I represent Seven Hills Hospitality Group, which is an experienced hospitality company based in Princeton, New Jersey. Joining me tonight is Ellen Bartlett. Ellen is our project engineer with CLA Engineers in Norwich. And I also have representing my client, Renita Summers, who's also on the call. I believe she might have some additional people with her as well. I want to thank the chairman and and commission staff for inviting us tonight for this informal workshop on the new hotel project. That my client's actively pursuing here in Waterford. I'm going to try to be brief. I've got a slide deck that I'll go through fairly quickly. And I'll try to leave some time for some questions and discussion at the end. As the chairman indicated, this is a nonbinding workshop, which is permitted by state statute. The purpose of which is to allow an informal discussion regarding an upcoming project. Allow us to share our concept with you, help identify any issues the commission may have with the proposal. And hopefully with the intent of trying to make sure that we address those issues upfront and before a formal submission. So if it's okay with your staff, I'd like to share my screen at this point.
Go ahead.
Can everybody see that? Okay? Everybody can see that?
I think so.
Great.
Yeah.
So like I said, I'm going to try to move fairly quickly through the slide deck tonight, but I just, I want to give you a little bit of background on the site and just get you acquainted. The subject property that's involved here, it actually encompasses four parcels of land. Which are either vacant or blighted between Boston Post Road, which is located on the the upper side of this photo, aerial photo. And Willets Avenue, which is on the lower side. I've done a sort of a red perimeter line sort of showing the. And Willets Avenue, which is on the lower side, I've done a sort of a red perimeter line sort of showing the project's site. Uh, the site, if you're familiar with this area, um is surrounded by sort of mixed-use commercial and residential to the north. Uh, there's the shopping mall or uh shopping center to the west where there's Planet Fitness, the liquor store. Um, and uh to the south, we have again a mixed-use sort of neighborhood. Of commercial and residential uses and to the east, directly to the east is Mercer Field. Uh, and the apartment complex, um just to the south of it. Um, this site is literally located on the town line, if you can see this red line, the east, the on the right side of your screen. Uh, and the line that cuts through Mercer's Field is the town line between Waterford and New London. Uh, and if you've driven by the site, particularly on the um uh the Millet, Willets Avenue side of the site. Uh, this certainly is not the most appealing gateway uh to the town of Waterford. Um, I took some, I have some other additional uh photos, this is a picture of the site from Boston Post Road. Uh, there's a hair, the hair salon is right off to the right, but it's basically vacant, overgrown. Uh, you see the old uh for sale for lease sign on the property. We also have, I also have a picture here of the appearance of the site. Um, from Willets Avenue, it's the old McNamara's or Mondays. Um, there is an abandoned blighted house, uh two, actually two blighted houses on the property on either side of the old. Um, barroom, um, uh sports bar uh facility. Uh, and again, the really right past that sort of peach-colored house is the town line, so this is the first property driving in. Uh, from New London into Waterford and and it certainly, it it could certainly be be a lot better looking than it is today. Um, we are currently before the Conservation Commission. Um, seeking inland wetland approvals for the project. Uh, we anticipate those approvals are forthcoming in probably the next thirty to forty-five days. And we would be making application to the P and Z Commission once those are obtained. Uh, the site itself, uh if I go back uh to this slide, the site itself is zoned uh general commercial. Uh, we have a purchase contract on the land involved. And our intent is to acquire the site and redevelop it um for a a one hundred and twenty-two-room extended stay hotel. Uh, as you're aware, uh or you should be aware, uh in the general commercial zone. Uh, hotels are permitted by special permit, and so we would be seeking a a special permit from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, couple things about my client and and the hotel that they're they're um uh building. Uh, this hotel would be flagged as as a Wood Springs Suites Hotel. Uh, if you're familiar with Wood Springs Suites, um, it is part of the Choice Hotels International Group. Which is one of the largest and most successful lodging franchises in the world. Uh, Choice International is actually traded on the New York Stock Exchange and includes other hotel brands like Radisson, Comfort, Quality. Uh, and has rigorous operational standards for all of its brands, including Wood Spring. Uh, Choice International currently franchises more than seven thousand hotels. Uh, that uh covers over over half a million rooms in more than forty countries around the world. Uh, and while the COVID pandemic is, if some of you may be aware, really hit the hotel industry hard. Extended stay hotels have become extremely popular and have really been the one bright spot in the hotel industry over the last few years. Um, with hotel guests um are looking for longer stays and for much different reasons than they did in the past. This is a graph that came out of a a industry, um, uh, uh, sort of an industry, uh, uh, met article. That was published earlier this year, just shows the number of um extended stay hotels that have been built. Uh, by various different brands or flags uh in the uh United States. And and the ones that are actually under construction and and it's really the whole gamut of of the hotel companies either uh across the board are doing these types of. Of facilities because the the demand for them in the marketplace, and you can see Wood Springs Suites is uh, you know, eight uh down, right in the middle of the group. As a, as a major operator of these types of extended stay facilities. Um. Go to the next slide. Um. So uh Wood Spring Suites, uh I think it's really important tonight and the, one of the messages I really wanna get along to the commission in this workshop. It's um this, the extended stay product is completely different. Um, than some other products that you may be more familiar with, particularly the older nightly um budget hotels that exist in some communities, including in communities next door like in New London. Um, those older sort of model uh hotels uh are unfortunately many times independently owned by individual franchisees. They're sometimes poorly managed and they cater to a completely different customer base than the extended stay model, which has grown in so much, so much popularity. In the case of my client, um, that I'm here tonight representing, they're gonna be the franchisee for this Wood Springs Suites uh hotel. Uh, but they'll actually be using a third-party uh professional management company, JP Hospitality Management. To actually operate and run the hotel for them. Um, they uh JP Hospitality Management is a very successful, very well-known um uh hotel operating company. Uh, they rep- uh rate currently operate over a hundred hotels in a variety of states in the, in the region. Uh, and so this is going to be professionally managed on a corporate level uh for the uh for the operation. Um. Moving on just slightly, um. The Woods Spring Suites model or brand has been around since the nineteen seventies. Um, yeah, it's actually been extremely popular, joined the Choice uh Hotel um uh International Group um several years ago. Um, Wood Springs Suites, the extended stay model is designed to offer accommodations to people for longer stays, often several weeks at a time. Each of their units contain kitchenettes and access in the hotel to laundry services. And they primarily cater and certainly at this location, um cater to a business customer base. Uh, all of Wood Springs Suites uh hotels are safe and secure, they have controlled access points, they have carefully trained staff. They have routine franchise inspections. And they have reserves in their operating funds to upkeep the facility, to make sure that they stay to those rigorous standards. That are set forth by Wood Springs Suites and their parent uh group, the Choice International brand. Um. Moving on, um, you know, these facilities are targeted to provide lodging primarily to corporate intermediary association and governmental clients. But they also allow, you know, individuals to book rooms there as well. Uh, the majority of their guests are college-educated at incomes at or above national averages. The customers that they're really focused on are cost-conscious, they're very practical, they want solid value. Uh, priced uh accommodations, comfortable place to stay without a lot of the unnecessary frills that other hotel chains may offer. Uh, in many markets, especially here in Waterford, many of the customers for Wood Springs, um. It are customers, are business travelers on temporary work assignments. Uh, they might be staffing, doing medical staffing, they may be in construction, uh engineering, education, or telecommunications. And and certainly this area of Connecticut is particularly um uh interesting and provides opportunities for my client. The growing workforce that's that's it, that's at Electric Boat, um, the workforce at Pfizer, the the hospital at L and M. Uh, and its various uh incarnations and even Dominion are all associated. Um, with bringing people in to the area for work. Uh, and also all the subcontractors to these major employers as well. And so it's, it's really, that is the driving force that's brought this uh site into consideration. Uh, there are additional guests, uh often uh Wood Springs Suites will um host transplants from other cities. People who are moving into the area, shopping for a new house and need um um temporary accommodation. Might be relatives that have come in for a week or two to help with maybe the birth of a grandchild or maybe a medical event that somebody in the family is dealing with. And 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 quite frankly, we also uh cater uh to families who have, you know, houses damaged by fire or weather or going through renovations as well. Um. Are the Wood Springs Suites product, um, these hotels are well-built, they're good luck-looking, they're smart-functioning. All of our site improvements, the windows, the lighting, the individual HVAC systems for every um unit. The water heaters, the appliances, they're all energy-efficient. Uh, there's security lighting and cameras available for all the public spaces and access points. Uh, all of those access points are key-carded and carefully controlled and monitored. Um, in this look, these are a couple of this color schemes for buildings that are used. Um, and there's sort of three major ones and you'll be seeing that we're proposing the neutral scheme for the Waterford. Uh, facility in a couple minutes, I'll show you the actual drawings. Um, here's a a picture of sort of the design of the interior of these um. Uh, these, of the, of the suite layout that we do, again, very simple, clean, um, um, uh, very utilitarian-type design. Um, in this location, we're going to um uh have a lobby on the lower floor, here's sort of a a model lobby. Um, we have guest laundry services in the lo- in uh near the lobby area, you've got a vending uh hall uh area for food and drink. Um, there are staff rooms and office and training rooms as well on the lower uh floor uh as well. We're gonna actually, in this facility specifically, we're gonna have um the same lobby layout, but we're also going to have a fitness room. We're gonna have, our lobby's gonna be enhanced with a communal table uh as well. Uh, this location in Waterford that we're looking at, we're gonna offer free wifi. It will also be a one hundred percent smoke-free facility, you can't smoke anywhere in it. Uh, and that's, that's important for the brand that we have. I've got some pictures of some, uh, here's the fitness center or a model fitness center that we put into the hotel, Waterford will have one of these. Um, here's some, just some examples of of sort of, again, the simple utilitarian, clean features of the rooms um that we are providing. Um, here's a picture of what the suites look like, as I said before, we have kitchenettes in every suite, there's not a dishwasher. But we've got a a a range, a a small range, a sink, a microwave, and you do have a a a full refrigerator as well. Um, in this facility, we're gonna have some enhanced guest room uh elements, so we're gonna be a little bit higher level. We're doing uh quartz countertops, uh the TVs are actually gonna be bigger than standard, we're going to fifty-inch TVs. Still don't have um dishwashers, but we will have, and I'll show you a floor plan or a model floor plan, we will have some deluxe king suites as well. Uh, we do allow pets, um, that's an optional thing, but we will be allowing pets if people have pets to bring uh with them for their stay. Um. You know, one of the things, here's some more, just some more pictures of what the rooms look like. Uh, we've got some just basic floor plans as well. To show you, and here's a queen suite. Again, another floor plan showing you how the suite lays out. Here's a picture, a little close-up picture of the kitchenette that's provided in every suite. Little bit, another shot to show you some of the storage as well. And and again, here's some of the, you can see that we've got a lot of the optional enhancements we're, we're adopting for the Waterford model. You know, one of the things that's really interesting about the extended stay model i- is that it has a, from our perspective, has a really positive impact. On the local economy as well, these aren't people who are just staying for a night or two, these might be somebody staying, coming in to work at EB or coming in to work at the hospital. For a, for, you know, multiple weeks, uh that has obviously a direct positive impact on the local economy. Um, the vacancy rates, um, our occupancy rates are about eight, over eighty percent for Wood Springs Suites. And so um these people who are, you know, at the hotel on these temporary assignments. Um, will shop locally, they'll go to the local restaurants, they'll go to the local supermarket. Um, they'll bring money into the Waterford economy, which I think is a, is a positive thing. Um, you also, obviously, this is taxable property, not really a zoning issue, but um, you know, this facility will bring somewhere in the range of three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars in taxes. Uh, when it's all built out. Um. Again, just another picture. Uh, here's a floor plan, sort of how these, these are laid out and stacked, and and I said, we are gonna have um. Uh, look like we're gonna do some deluxe suites as well in here, the final floor plan layout we're working on, but this is generally how they stack here, this, in the first floor is that central lobby area. Then we've got the wing um on either side, and then we go, it is a fourth-story building, so there'll be second through fourth uh fourth story. Uh, with the other different suites and offerings. Uh, this is actually the design that we're pushing forward for the Waterford uh facility right now, um, so again, we're using that in the neutral color palette. Um, you can see that we're using a variety of materials on the outside of the building. Uh, we've got some um these, this siding is all uh fiber cement materials, so these are gonna hold up really well, they're not gonna flake or fall apart. Um, asphalt shingles and we have stone veneers on the water table. Uh, again, we're trying to break it up, the the building have some um articulation on it as well. Um, to create some interesting visual uh features, including uh the portico uh in the front. Uh, here's just sort of a blow-up of sort of the front of the building. And we've got some architecturals as well, we're keeping to the height limit. Um, which is forty feet in the GC zone. And again, we call out the materials, and again, it's a mix of of sort of the lap siding, the shake. Um, you know, um, all, again, all uh 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 fiber cement-type materials so that really holds up and. Don't really have to worry about long-term maintenance of these facilities. I get just a couple other uh drawings. And I I just, this is my last slide uh for tonight, but this is our 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 um landscape layout plan that's before wetlands right now. I think one of the things I wanted to point out in this is, we've taken some real effort to try to locate the building in the most appropriate place on the site. You can see we've pushed it up against Mercer Field, um, this blue line is the wetland upland review area, so that's a hundred feet. So you can see that the building itself is more than a couple hundred feet from both Willets Avenue and Route One, we sort of located it centrally on the site. So you don't have a building that's gonna be hanging over the um uh either roadway, it's sort of interior to the site. And it shifted as far east as possible to keep it away from a couple of, there's a couple of single-family homes on Willets Avenue right here. Um, so we try to put that as far away from that, we're also making sure that we have sufficient landscaping. Um, on our entrances, we have an entrance, um, a full entrance on Route One, a full entrance on Willets Avenue, that's gonna. Create a good and efficient traffic flow to the site. Uh, we we have traffic engineering going on right now, there's no uh anticipated impacts or or issues with traffic generated from the site. Uh, but we're also, we're doing a ton of landscaping along Willets and along Route One. Um, in talking with staff and with the chairman, I know. Um, there's a desire to make this site look a lot better than it looks now, and that won't be hard, quite frankly, considering its current look, but. We really wanna make, make a nice gateway project, so when you're coming out of New London into Waterford, rather than having a rundown blighted building with graffiti. You actually have a professionally managed, for, you know, oh, um, oh, uh, uh, hotel complex. Owned by a professional hospitality company with a national brand on it, with national standards, something that looks nice, that has. A professionally uh landscaped um uh site plan. Um, there are some wetlands on the property, as I said before, we're not touching those areas, um, we are doing a little bit of work in the upland review, and again, we're working with Conservation right now to get those. Uh, permits, but again, we really made an effort to try to locate the building in the most appropriate place uh on the site. So again, that's a really quick sort of overview of the project. Um, I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you might have about. Uh, Wood Springs Suites, about my client, Seven Hills Hospitality Group, who will be the franchisee. Um, I also have Renita on the online, if you have any questions specifically about the operational side. And then if you have engineering sort of layout questions, Ellen should be able to help as well. But again, we just, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you, at least let you know what we were doing. Um, I think this is gonna be a real asset and it'd be a a really nice addition and and most importantly, clean up. A really problematic property here on the eastern edge of Waterford and certainly would love to have any constructive comments or suggestions that you might have before we formally submit to you, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Sweeney, could you remove the screen?
Absolutely.
Thank you, so to the applicant who's here, I think it's Miss Summers, um, ju-. I think these, these types of meetings are helpful, this was a hotel special permit project in in what's a considered a mixed-use area, it's got. Neighborhoods, got some small business, it's got a athletic field, so it's, it's nice to get this, and I know it, it it. Took some time out of your, you and your um professionals' time, but I think in the end, it works out better for everybody. It's more cost-effective, more efficient, and 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 makes the project run smoother, I, I. I really enjoyed the presentation, at least we know what we're looking at here. Um, I think it's a, it's a good use of this property, I would suggest that. Whatever you do, uh, you take care of the neighbors in terms of landscaping, it looks like you, looks like the plan is pretty good. You think you're shy anywhere, you can take care of them, because if we have um some opposition to it. Like to at least feel comfortable that we've taken care of them in terms of buffering this. Major, you know, commercial operation from, from their, from their neighborhood. Uh, or their business, so that's my biggest thing, the, the only question I have is, is this a double entrance or is one a service entrance and one the main entrance? So that's my biggest thing. The, the only question I have is, is this a double entrance or is one a service entrance and one the main entrance?
There is one main entrance. Um the building is totally secure twenty-four-seven. You, as a um non-guest or a new guest, if you haven't been and you don't have a key card yet. You can get to the registration in the lobby area and then there are double doors there that are locked. So you cannot go to the, to the corridor, the guestrooms. There is a um door on the back. Um that guests can use to go in and out and there are doors on the side. Just your, a regular single door that a guest could use with a key card to go in or out.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant street entrances. Are these, are these both on on Willetts and and Boston Post? Are they both? Public entrances?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Yes, the actual curb cuts are both public.
Okay, a- and so I would just, you know, in my opinion, I'd just suggest that we have nice lighting and signage and. And make those look good as they're the gateway to to Waterford.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh you know, one of the things, taking your comment, I think that we'll make sure that we do in our package is. Our landscaping slash lighting plans will be carefully designed and we'll make sure that we demonstrate that. The lighting has no impact on surrounding properties. Obviously, we'll be using Night Skies compliant full clock uh cutoff fixtures. And we'll make sure, we'll go back and we'll double-check, you know, make sure our landscaping is sufficient. And if there's any way we can beef up, particularly along those, the backs of some of those single-family homes, we'll see what we can do to to uh enhance that. To the eh, the extent possible.
Great, thank you. Any other uh questions or comments, Tim?
I have a question. Um how many years is JP Hospitality Management contracted to run the hotel for?
Believe that that eh we will contract with them for a seven-year contract. Um they're very good at what they do. I do have two representatives um on the line if there are any specific questions. Um you know, we can. Contract with them for longer, um but we, it usually starts with a seven or eight-year contract and then go from there.
All set, Doris?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh Tim, anything?
Just a quick comment. I know that there's a state uh review right now for Willetts in reference to traffic. Um closely associated to the other condo that's, that's proposed. That might be a consideration for this Willetts um ingress and egress to the place. I don't know how that will affect it or. I- if that's a consideration.
Yeah, our, our traffic um study, uh our traffic engineer has to consider all. Um currently approved and pending projects in his analysis. So that will be part of our submission for special permit will be um an analysis from, from them indicating. The sufficiency and the safety of our traffic circulation and access points. But yes, we absolutely have to take advantage, um take account of everything that's going on around the site, not just our site in a vacuum.
Thank you.
Karen, anything?
Comment on is, I noticed that there's a, looks like a twelve-foot elevation difference between the front of the building. And the rear parking lot area. And I would just make sure that we have um, you know, access and ramps and. Um you know, the drawing right now is pretty, pretty basic, but I I'm interested to see how you're gonna handle that slope. Um with the topology that you have.
Ellen, could you, can you address that? And obviously, you know, we have to design it to be compliant with all ADA requirements. But Ellen, could you just very briefly address that?
Um thi- this is Ellen Bartlett with CLA Engineers. And um what you have, what you look at is just a um presentation plan. We have fully developed grading plans. All the entrances are ADA accessible. I do wanna say that last month, we did go before the Conservation Commission and got approval already, so. Um we also got comments from DOT and have addressed their comments, so we're pretty much ready to submit. Um I'm listening to what you've been saying tonight and we will beef up some of the landscaping along the perimeter. Um but the, the grading works, everything's under five percent for the walkways, um the entrances and the parking lots. And also, the traffic engineer for the project is here tonight if you had any questions for him. The architect is also here if you have any questions for them. But at this point, maybe we should just wait till the the um application is submitted and do the formal public hearing presentation.
Yeah, this is more for comments to you as opposed to questions to you, just to make sure that and everything that what. Is is uh addressed upon the submission, so that things go smoother.
Uh we'll, we'll make sure that Mr. Kelly addresses Mr. Condorino's comment about the state's analysis of Willetts Avenue. And we'll, we'll make sure that his, his analysis includes some reference or or, you know, addresses that appropriately.
Yeah, okay. So I hope you think it was helpful. Um sometimes there's a lot more concerns and comments. I think, uh at least in my opinion, I I'm much more um. I'm, I'm less concerned about the project now after this presentation than I was before the presentation or before we knew about what was happening there, so.
And Mr. Chairman, we just, we, we really wanted to make sure you understood who was involved and the, the level of professionalism that my client was bringing to this project. Um cause we see this as a, as a major boon for Waterford. This is a really positive project, particularly for this site. So we really, again, thank you for the, the invite and we look forward to coming before you in a formal special permit application.
Okay, thank you. Anything, anybody else or can we end this issue? Great, thank you everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Okay, uh item number six is administrative review. Do we have anything uh past current projects? Uh you guys are, Mark, you're muted if you're saying anything.
All right, okay. Okay, so um yeah, we do have a, uh we have a preliminary application in for a single family. Uh this is another single-family cam, uh similar to what we just acted on tonight. Uh this is located at thirty-one Riverside Drive. Um and uh also relative to the Civic Triangle Park. But uh the commission had just recently approved. Uh I'm still waiting on final plans of my hours for signature. Uh for that, for that project.
Sorry, great. I don't know if you want me to put this in this section here. Oh, I'll wait till item eight.
Okay, yeah, I think I kinda combined the two, but um item number seven, eight, do you have any correspondence?
None.
Okay, so then let's go to item eight, Commission Business. Any other projects?
So um as you know, uh Mr. Chairman, as I, I've informed Mr. The Chairman that. Uh we will be um addressing the um twenty-eight Industrial Drive. Uh for those of you who don't know, that is the uh Cobalic Industries. It was a size special permit approval in two thousand and twelve, which was denied and then appealed, and it has been in court ever since. And it has come back to the town um for us to uh address. Um so what the plan is, is to have our town attorney, who has been handling the case for the last. Ten, eleven years now. Um come and have an executive session in which he will explain the uh where we are. Uh and then what the options are for the commission going forward, we, as it pertains to this project. Uh I'll leave it at that because I don't wanna, you know, say anything more about it um. Uh that we'll hear more about it in executive session. So we're planning on that being on December twelfth. Uh Attorney Avina will be here and we will go into the executive session. That's the only item I think, well, that we have at this point, but uh I believe it's important that we get this. Uh and we, you guys understand what's going on um as soon as possible.
And and just for the question, that probably will be in person, just because of the executive session nature of it.
Yes, yes.
All right, any other projects, any other things we need to be updated on? Okay, great. Uh is there item number nine, adjournment, motion to adjourn?
They'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Tim. Sir Second?
I second that.
Seconded by Doris, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, all right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, Karen?
Aye.
Doris, okay, great. Thank you everyone. That was a. We quick meeting and we'll see everybody on the fourteenth. Hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving and enjoying the holidays coming up.
The twelfth, actually, but yes, we'll see you there.
Twelfth, right, okay, great. Thank you.
Bye, okay.